Energy's picking up because quarter three ends.
All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call the city council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Molly, if you could help me with the roll call once again.
Everything. Alderperson Henry.
Here.
Alderperson Schaper. Alderperson Valdi.
Here.
Alderperson Grimmer.
Here.
Alderperson Price.
Here.
Alderperson Iker.
Here.
Alderperson Dean is excused. Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Administrator Happner.
Here.
Great. Move on to four, special order of business. A, resolution 2023-05, a revolution, resolution extending appreciation to District Four Alderperson Wayne Dean. Do you wanna say something, Tom?
Yeah, unfortunately Wayne didn't inform us that he wouldn't be at either of the March meetings until the last meeting, so we weren't able to have this on the agenda with Wayne being present. But Wayne's been a long time alderperson and has done a really nice job representing the citizens of his district. And I think this resolution is definitely appropriate in Wayne's honor.
Yeah, I agree. I will miss his willingness to find common ground with people that he didn't always agree with. That was special skill.
Appreciate him participating. Okay, we'll move on to five.
Oh, I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2023-05, thanking Wayne for his service.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, the second.
Jack.
Well, with the tie between.
Oh. She was louder. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, number five, approval of the following meeting minutes, March 6, 2023, regular meeting and public hearing.
Move to approve, March 6 minutes for this council.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Number six, City of Delphide comments. And he says his comments. Come on up. Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you.
Can I share those with Molly?
Good evening. Jim Zor, 1948, West Shore Drive. I am here this evening for an item that's not on the agenda, but one week from today, there will be a public hearing concerning an application for a permit to put in a pier at the base of St. John's Bay that will accommodate six slips. And I've spoken in the past about my concern about this particular location, but I bring it up this evening because I don't know how many more years I'm gonna be here and be able to appear in front of you folks, so I thought, for the record, I took the liberty of getting a copy of our permit that we utilize for the harvesting of weeds in Lake Negoicke. And there are two things extremely specific that I want everyone to be aware of. The first page talks about the depth that they can cut and that which they can't. And then we're referring again to St. John's Bay. They cannot disturb the bottom 12 inches of weed growth because that holds the silt. So if you upset the bottom, we have a problem. The second page that I sent you, figure two denotes the harvesting plan for the sensitive area number one in St. John's Bay. Mechanical harvesting is limited to the access channels denoted on figure two, and that's the third page of your handout. The maximum width of each channel may not exceed 20 feet. Harvesting in this area may not occur after July 1st of any year. A minimum of one foot of uncut plant material shall be left at the lake bottom. Why is this so important to us? For people that navigate on Lake Negoicke, there's a channel that's in the middle of the bay that allows people to get into the Bleecker Street launching ramp. That channel ends a beam of that. From there towards the fishing pier, as you can see in that diagram, there's no weed cutting allowed. If you go around Lake Negoicke in the morning, you'll see me on a thing called a pedal board. This is what propels it. This much is in the water. After maybe the 1st of August, I'm incapable of getting to that fishing pier because of the weed growth. And it's no reflection on the Department of Public Works. They're limited by this agreement that we have with the DNR. They have to stop cutting. And for someone that's had a greenhouse in the City of Delafield for over 30 years, weeds don't stop growing on July 1st. So I know it's well intended, but I think it's incumbent on the city that in the event that this goes in, I was, I was at the DNR today just talking and seeing if there's any possibility of improving or allowing more cutting in that area. And the immediate reaction was you can't because it's a sensitive area. So for, for people that want to enjoy this lake, we have warnings of shallow areas out at the, as you would enter the bay, that it's a hazard. And I think it would be very prudent that signs go up indicating that further down in the bay. If you live on the lake, you know the problem. If you come to visit our lake, you don't. And when people wish to find either lavatory facilities or go get something to eat, and that would be the main reason for these piers, for the transient people to enjoy downtown Delafield, it could become a very unpleasant experience if you end up ruining a jet ski, or an outboard, or an inboard, because anything that is of that type of propulsion is gonna draw a lot more water than just this. And you're gonna ingest the weed, you're gonna ingest the silt, and have a very unhappy customer. So I, again, I know it's well intended, but it's like any other thing in real estate, it's location, location, location. And this location is not, it's an attractive nuisance if you wanna look at it a different way. If you had a child and you said, oh, please don't go there because it's dangerous. That's the situation we have here. So I rest my case. I thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Great, thank you for the comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Who else would be, like to be next? Anybody else? Come on up.
I always wait. I think I'd let other people go, but I'm not gonna let you call last time. Suzie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. Thank you both to Tom and Kent about the weed collector, collecting of yard waste, bringing up that topic to make sure that, for those of us that don't have big enough yards to do composting on our own property, it'll be nice if we can get something worked out that we can bring things to the dump, to have it properly composted there. Jim Sohorek brought up some very interesting information, and I wanted to have a hawks eye view of the papers you got because it sounded like some important information that was being brought up about whether to have or not have a pier at St. John's Bay. From a downtown resident viewpoint, having more people coming downtown and using downtown for shopping and restaurants, I am year-round meeting people from other cities and other states that are coming here. We're, we are a destination, and I don't think it's just people that are coming because of the lake. They're coming because of the city. So I think we're doing a good job, and Department of Tourism is popping out some info. And last on my list, thank you, thank you, thank you for the list of bands that are gonna play at Liberty Park this summer. So that was on page 123, and it's nice to have a full venue of things going on there as well.
Great, thanks for the comments. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Citizens' comments are now closed. Looks like we got a proclamation on the consent agenda. Proclamation of the City of Delafield observes a Arbor Day on April 28th, 2023. You need to vote on proclamations?
Well, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Ball. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, eight. Boards, committees, commissions, reports, licenses.
We received the application for the Commodore to have their Class B combination, 300-seat minimum alcohol beverage retail license approved. I have spoke with them to let them know we can grant the license, but because they're in the middle of renovations and we'll have to have the health inspection completed before we can officially issue the license to them, they are just wanting to make sure that that is one less T that they have to cross before they move on with their project.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class B retail license for liquor license for the Commodore, contingent upon Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, or Waukesha County Health Inspection.
I'll second.
All righty, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. All right, Plan Commission, Mr. Iker, please.
We have not had a meeting since our last council meeting, but we do have some previous business that's in front of us to approve, or at least vote on. First is the, the name of it isn't here. What is it called? The farmhouse, but it's.
Rustic Manor.
Rustic Manor. Oh gee, I should know. So Rustic Manor.
It's 'cause I've never been here before.
That's why I can't believe.
Well, they don't have it written down here, and it says farmhouse, 1848. They've got a new name.
Oh, is that a new name? But anyway, so this is, this is something that, if you recall, we, we updated our, our city ordinance regarding the approval of events, venues, and this one meets those conditions. And now we have a conditional use in front of us that was approved, or recommended for approval by the Plan Commission on February 22nd. So before I make a motion, I don't know if anyone has any questions for the applicant or not?
I do. This amendment that we have here, it looks like we overlooked, or somehow it got overlooked. You have noise.
Yeah, we did.
Or you have music outside, which I know you've had basically since the day you've been open.
Yeah.
So it should be no surprise. I just had one question, and that is, we pulled up an old document today from, I don't know, 10 plus years ago, and it said, talked about 80 decibel limit. And in this document, the revision here would be asked to approve tonight, it says 60 decibels. What has it been over the time? Do you recall?
Yeah, right now, 80 decibels is, I'll just say, a lot. If you, decibels are kind of a hard way to put into perspective. If you were to equate a decibel unit to, let's say, an extended family gathering for Thanksgiving and a small house and kids running around, you'd probably expect the average noise level to be about 30 to 40 decibels. Just kind of keeping everyone in that contained space. It's kind of the best way that I can put perspective on how loud this would be. So 60 is really probably our average, even for indoors, 60 to 80. Once you hit 80, it's hard to talk to the next person next to you. It's just, yeah. So 60 for us seemed very reasonable. I bet most of our ceremonies, which is really what the music that we're talking about, we have outdoor ceremonies. They obviously wanna play some walking down and walking back music down the aisle, so I'd say it's probably normally around that 40 decibel range. 60 allows us to, we, we had someone who had a bluegrass band play on our back patio for cocktail hour once, and they were a little bit louder than the ceremony music. So things that would just certainly accommodate maybe a three or four-piece band. And when I say band, it's usually just string instruments that aren't amplified, but they do make noise, so.
Yeah, I have a chart I pulled up. It's super accessible. Rock and roll band, 130 decibels.
Yeah.
So chainsaw, 110. Like 80 is like a, like a talkative restaurant.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not gonna be like, oh my god.
No, it's not.
Heavy metal.
But decibels are hard. That's not a normal conversation, so that's a hard place to pinpoint a starting range on, so.
So we have had noise complaints for years. I just, at the end of the day, I just wanna make sure this is a number you're comfortable with, because the way you run your business, it's, it's worked just fine.
Yeah, we're not looking to change anything, and the reason it was overlooked is because it's just such second nature to us that I don't even think about the, the music outside, because usually it's very short-lived. It's about three minutes walking down at the beginning and maybe another two minutes at the end, and that's about it, so.
Occasionally they'll have one speaker on the patio, maybe for some cocktailing music, but it's, it's very minimal.
Few and far between.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for DELC 0753999002 for the operation, for the conditional use amendment to allow the event facility to operate without the requirement as a bed and breakfast.
I'll second it.
Are you including the redline provision before you?
Yes, including the amendment that is redlined in the packet. All right, I'm sorry.
That reference 60 decibel.
In the documents in front of you.
That references 60, yeah, that references 60 decibels, yes.
I still second.
All righty, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes.
And then the next item is for the long discussed, one of two developments going on at the St. John's properties, the 1307 Genesee Street, which is the Miller Marriott development for 30 single lot family subdivision where they're converting what was 36 platted lots into 30 single family lots. So before any motion, if anyone has any questions about that, we have an applicant here to beat up if we need to. Is there any, any questions? Because there's other processes then that this goes through as the development continues as far as final, specific implementation in the other plans, so we'll see this again.
Question about the tree removal. It says no protected trees removed in the initial development.
None that will be removed that aren't in the right of way for the road widening.
So it's.
So they're technically not on our property, but they need to get removed.
Just on our other city.
Correct.
So how many in the right of way will be removed?
I would have to pull the tree removal plan, which has already been submitted to the city. It's in excess of 100. Some of those are already dying or dead. So it is a significant number, but there's a lot more trees out there than probably people think. There's been a tire tree survey done.
Yeah, several hundred, but it looks like 17 protected trees in the right of way will be removed.
Again, we tried to save as many trees, but through the road vacation, we've worked the paths around the trees. We've also tried to work the sidewalks around the trees as well. So everything outside the right of way, we're doing our best to try and save those trees. It's important to us. It's important to the people that wanna live in there. Good. I think the only thing that's a little different, when I was in front of the common council before, is the lot count's gone from 31 to 30. So we did remove a lot from the, instead of three on that northern parcel, now there's two. And we reworked the walkway that we're actually gonna not try and squeeze it between the arch as you enter. It really created a pinch point. We thought there was some difficulty there, working with staff. And St. John's, we are actually gonna take it through part of the flat area of the arch, so it's easier for snow plowing and items like that. And it really creates a nice connection for people that wanna walk.
To my analogies, there's no, there's been no request to deviate from the city's tree mitigation plans, where exceptions being asked for.
No.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Miller Marriott development on 1307 Genesee Street and 411 St. John's Road.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Who had the second? I feel like the microphone is making everybody sound a little bit different. Thank you.
All right then, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes.
And so for the, the Plan Commission's next meeting is next Wednesday, and so developments like this, as well as the other one at, on the golf course, they're going through the different processes, so just keep in tune if you're interested in, in seeing how those things are progressing, because the farther along they get, the more detailed the individual requests will be, and the more detailed the plans will be. If you have any issues or wanna work with the developers on some sort of a modification, so just stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that would be it for Plan Commission.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Lake Welfare Committee, Mr. Price.
Yes, we met last Wednesday. There's two main issues we were talking about. The first was, we're trying to get some cooperation from the village to work on the pond. There's kind of been, there's a pond back there for retaining water, and it's kind of grown in, and trees and grass and stuff in there, and they're cutting it real low, so we're trying to get them to let the grass grow back up and, you know, keep that the way it's intended. So I think we'll get some cooperation out of the people out there. It's in their best interest as well. The other thing we were talking about is the impervious surface for repairing properties, ordinance that we sent to the council two years ago, and then they came back and made a change to it. Now we're, we're sending it back again now with a four-word difference from the original one, okay? Then we were told that to do that, it may cost us $2,000 for engineering, legal, et cetera. And there was no charge the first time, and we're just removing four words from it. So I was asked maybe the mayor or somebody in the office could take a look at that and see if that's rid of the case, because we don't have 2,000 left in our budget. So we'd have to put that in next year's budget, and we wanted to get that into the construction season, if it's, if it's possible, to get that into Plan Commission so they can send it to here. Just to have one little ordinance, the first thing was already approved with no expense. In your audit, you said 15 minutes, and I guess legal's supposed to have to look at it, because of, an attorney looking at it, potentially it could be a couple thousand bucks. Is that normal, what normally happens, or is that just one of those, we'll give you the high number, and hopefully it won't go above that, but it may only be 200 bucks? I don't know, but we just don't have the two grand to get it done. So if it's something significantly less than that, we could find a way to get it done. But at two grand, we'd have to wait till next year.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike Houseman worked with Amy Burrows and our city attorney to get the estimates. I think the city attorney's estimate was, was just two to four hours, but I mean, at $225 an hour, that adds up. And I don't remember what, what Amy's estimate was, but $2,000 doesn't sound unreasonable for the professional services involved.
I just, my, our curiosity was, we put it through the first time, there wasn't any charge to our committee.
So we'd have to go back and look, but I mean, you know, it's, it's quite possible, when I received the bill for SEH and I'm coding it, that I did code some, sometimes the Lake Welfare Committee.
Thank you.
You said that was a couple of years ago?
Yeah, it was about two, two years ago.
Yeah.
But we were never aware of any, any charge back to our committee, and, you know, Amy didn't think there would be much of a charge either, but you could just kinda look into that, we'd appreciate that. If not, we're gonna have to put her off a year, because we don't have two grand in our budget, so.
Well, something to budget for next year, potentially, and then there's, Tom can get you the answer, but there's also the problem of unintended consequences, right? When I realize you're talking about, you know, forward change to something that was basically brought up and not really ferreted out all that well, to do the deep dive and really try to understand what that code change would be, how you enforce it, what that process is gonna be, you know, I, I don't remember any documentation coming from the Lake Welfare Committee detailing any of those types of, you know, answers to questions. So, you know, it's, it's more, it's often more complicated than you think when we try to make sure that we understand how it's all gonna work, so.
Okay, we need to understand that if we do. We're just curious about the, the expense.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Sounds good, thank you. All righty, Public Works, E. Mr. Grimmer.
No mean.
No report. No meaning, no report, got it. Okay, Delahart, Striker.
We have not.
We have not had a meeting, we have our next meeting tomorrow, so I'll have a full report at our next council meeting.
Sounds good, thank you. Police Commission, Ms. Bowdy.
We haven't had a meeting, but we have one on Wednesday at five thirty at the police department, and it is discussing really personnel issues, the change with the retirement of Chief Gill. So full information next meeting, if I'm here.
All righty, Library Board, Ms. Henry.
Yes, so we have a very nice update in our packet now from the director, kind of highlights what's going on in the library. The Winter Reading Program did exceptionally well, the goal of seventy-five thousand minutes was reached about half the time. The program ended with one hundred and thirty thousand minutes, rather than just a long pause. Awesome. Mark, your calendar's for March twenty eighth, and Culvers, Wales is, Culvers, Wales is doing a fundraiser for Friends of the Library. They'll be donating.
Sounds good, thank you very much. I've just been notified that I skipped Park and Rec, so back to Park and Rec. No meeting, no report.
Nice.
There you go.
You didn't watch.
Okay, is there any Board of Appeals? I don't believe there was any meeting, correct?
Checking. No meeting.
No.
Okay, Promotion and Tourism Commission, Ms. Schaefer.
Promotion and Tourism, we've, working on our, our marketing plan for the year, reviewing the visitor logs from the last few years to retarget our marketing appropriately. We've placed ads in the Wisconsin Bike Federation Guide and Motorcycle Roads Guide to target those, those folks. And one of our hotels had a accounting error, apparently had an accounting error, and overpaid us in 2022, and is looking for a refund of that. We're working through how to do that right now with the overpayment of their tax, so.
They just paid it early.
They prepaid. We'll take it out next year. We're working with them, and we'll make it, we'll get, we'll get their books straight.
Okay, sounds, sounds good, thank you. All, Country Fire and Rescue Commission, no meetings that I'm aware of, but I'd refer you to their website to double check. Lake Country Fire and Rescue, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, our next meeting is Wednesday at five. I would like to let folks know there will be an informational session on the upcoming referendum. That'll be two sessions, Sunday the twenty-sixth, from one to three, and Tuesday the twenty-eighth, from six to eight. Those are at Delafield's fire station.
Sounds good, and for those that are watching or participating, you know, please call your older person, or call city staff if you have any questions about that referendum. We're more than happy to go through the details with you. You've got the flyer in the mail that delivered early last week, and we're trying to communicate that as efficiently and as accurately as possible, but if you still have questions, please reach out to somebody sitting here, or staff, or fire chief, and we're willing to try to help you understand that, you know, anytime that, that we can get back to you, so please do that if you need to.
I'll add that, this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from noon to two here at City Hall, I'm having an informational meeting about a lot of the projects going on in District Three, but also Chief Fennig is coming to give people information about the referendum as well. Lots of opportunities.
Okey dokey. Okay, other committees, Dear Management Committee, Ms. Henry.
Yeah, we are, we, we have not had a meeting since our last, maybe, or, we are meeting tomorrow, hopefully. Is it our last? I'm sorry. We are meeting tomorrow, we have not had a meeting since our last.
Good, sounds good. All right, No Unfinished Business Nine, number ten, No Mayor's Report. All right, number eleven, New Business, A Discussion of Possible Action Regarding, Regarding Ordinance Eight Fourteen and An Ordinance to Repeal and Recreate Section Two dash one nine four parentheses seven of the City of Delafield Municipal Code to Update the Order of Business. Who's got that one?
Yeah, what this accomplishes is simply identifies the Dear Management Committee as a regular committee in our order of business, and so it'll no longer need to be listed under other committees, commissions, and boards on the agenda.
I would make a motion.
I'll second approval of Ordinance Eight Fourteen.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. See, Paul, that's an easy one.
That's an easy one, yeah.
Okay, eleven B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Proposed Yard Waste Drop-Off Program for the City Residents. Tom?
Yeah, so there's a memo in your packet regarding a proposed yard waste drop-off program. When we switched from waste management to John's disposal service, we did lose the availability of the yard waste bag sticker program for, for the disposal of yard waste. And one proposed solution that we came up with would be to simply locate a dumpster at our existing brush drop-off site that people could bring their yard waste to. We've identified costs for that, and the costs are a little bit variable based on the number of times we'd fill that dumpster, but we've projected an estimate of about three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to provide that service for the year. Again, that would be available on the fourteen Saturdays that the brush drop-off collection is open to the public, and we will have available funds in the budget to cover this cost that the council would like to move forward with this proposal.
Questions about that, it said something about, you estimated that it'll need to be emptied five times, is that, is that the whole year? How big is this dumpster?
The dumpster is thirty yards.
And it, so is that five times in a year?
Five times in a year is what we're estimating. Could be three, could be seven.
But the price remains the same.
No, the price varies, so the.
You get charged every time you empty it.
Eight, I see, I see it now.
Additional four hundred and sixty-five dollars for each additional pull over five.
And is this like, and I know yard waste, is that including leaves and things like that?
Yeah, grass clippings, leaves, garden waste, when you pull your flowers out at the end of the year, things like that.
I'm just wondering, is it underestimating about leaves that would go through? I know in our neighborhood, a lot of, like, remove.
So we're not anticipating that most people will want to load up all their leaves and haul them here.
Do, do we have records of what, what pickups were done with the paper bag pickups passed?
I don't have records, but my understanding is that it was minimal.
I don't know, I think it might be worth a try, you know, like, I think it's an approachable solution, and, and we could tweak it, it's not a wild amount of money, and it might help many folks get rid of, you know, some of their, you know, stuff that they're unable to compost or whatever. I don't, I like the idea.
It is an inexpensive, flexible solution. If we need to expand it, if we need to get rid of it, it's, there's nothing, nothing lost, really. I've been on the same path as Tom.
Whoa.
But.
We have colored copies.
A couple miles behind him, I've been working on the, in case anybody questions whether we need this or not, Tom's, Tom's already working on a solution, but I'm working on a justification. This is how District Two, and some of these photos are actually from District One as well, this is how we mulch leaves in District Two, the land of the tree lovers. We have a lot of trees, and there's a lot of burning, the entire month of October, you're breathing smoke. And if you look through these, you'll notice a lot of these fires are unattended as well. They're burning all day, people aren't necessarily standing out there all day. So there's a safety issue, there's an annoyance issue, there's a retention pond filled with leaves here, which is used annually as a leaf dump. And I think if we can cut, help cut back on the burning, that would be a good thing.
Do you think this'll, do you think the drop-off will change the practice, the habit for burning?
It's really easy to burn the leaves, they're not gonna get in their car, I mean, I don't think it's gonna have, I'm.
I'm, actually, I support this, I'm not saying I don't, but I, I agree with you that burning is sometimes necessary, but also very obnoxious and unfortunate. I know it's, I, I get that it's necessary, but, yeah, when I'm out on an October day and smoke wafts, and you can't go outside some days.
Yeah, and you're not supposed to be burning with a certain amount of wind, but sometimes you start, and then the wind kicks up, so I get that too, but, you know, again, I think it's worth a try.
And it's not supposed to be unattended either, which.
Exactly.
My question about the, the dumpsters, is there, is there a way that it can be staged so that people could drop them off without necessarily needing to lift them up, carry them over into the dumpster? Like, does he have a pallet or something set up so they can be off the ground?
Dumpster has a door that opens, so you can back a trailer right into it.
Oh, okay.
Except for once it gets to be too full, then you can't open that door anymore, because otherwise the material will come out. So it'll be a matter of timing, is to, sometimes you'd be able to show up and back your trailer in, other times you'll show up and, we'll have to say the dumpster's too full.
I would just suggest that we need to consider the fact that there's gonna be some people that are gonna have a minimal amount, and they're gonna have, they're gonna buy the bags, and they're gonna show up, and they're not gonna want to throw them over the shoulder, over a six-foot wall, so we need, we just need to, I'm sure D P W will come up with a way to deal with the fact that people can drop them off on the side, or no? I would like to think so.
I think Jackie's.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a trial.
For someone who can't.
Right, right. There is a staff person.
We try, and then we learn.
Okay, all right.
Help people that need help.
Okay, all right.
I think for the average person, six-foot tall dumpster and a bag of leaves is pretty.
I don't doubt it, I don't doubt it.
Pretty easy.
There's days I don't wanna do it.
Danielle, getting back to your concern about, you know, you know, getting too much material, it's only open fourteen Saturdays a year, five hours each Saturday, so there's minimum opportunity to even access it.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, I think we need something, absolutely.
This is a topic that has befuddled many a councils, right? We have not reinvented the wheel here. And so this is a relatively inexpensive way to try to make up for the gap of having no option, right? So that, that's kind of the idea with this, and, you know, quite frankly, to your concern, Danielle, any further expansion of this becomes exponentially expensive.
I know.
Quick. And that's why it's befuddled councils for decades.
People really exploit the, the two times a year brush pickup, too, and I know that that goes off really well. I mean, people time it, they know it.
Well, that's, that's my thought on this, too, if people are aware of it, I feel like it's gonna be bigger than it is.
It's a similar process, though.
Thirty-five yards times.
We're using a process we've already got placed for brush.
And keep in mind, of those fourteen days, a lot of those Saturdays are in June, and July, and August, and.
They're not gonna have a lot of.
Yeah.
Might have garden stuff, but not a lot of leaves.
Seems like a low-cost way to try it out.
Yeah, give it a try and see what the demand is like, see if people ask for an expansion of it next year, more days, or something like that.
Do we need a motion?
Do.
I think they consent, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure to rent a dumpster, a thirty-yard dumpster from John's to facilitate yard waste pickup at the, or drop off at the, at the dump.
Second. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Tom, I just have a question off there. You know, the City of Hartland has a truck that sucks up the leaves. Have we ever looked into doing that, with the cost?
Sure have.
It's probably huge, but if Hartland can do it, it can't be that far out of Rockland.
Well, just like any other municipal service, if you were providing it before levy limits went into place in two thousand and eleven, it's easy to continue providing it, but to add a service is, is very difficult with levy limits.
Because that would take care of the burning problem, you know, so, which I think people would, would appreciate it, because nobody likes to be, have their neighbor blowing or smoking their front window, you know.
Well, we've got one referendum in front of them now, and another one for leaf burning, we can talk about that for November, the next election.
Sure is a question.
Paul, I've had that service in other places I've lived in, it works well with curb and gutter, because there's a defined place for those leaves. When you have no curb, no gutter, maybe a ditch, maybe no ditch, it's, it's difficult to define a place to, to put, do a leaf pickup. It might be a little too rural, rural for that.
Okay.
And that's a good thing.
Okay, last one under New Business, D, Approval Vouchers.
See it.
Oops, I missed it, I'm sorry. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Request from the Delafield Arts Foundation to Waive the Event Permit Fee for Their Seven Events for Twenty Twenty-three Entertainment Series. Almost skipped ya, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Barwig, I'm at eighteen thirty-two West Shore Drive, I'm here representing the Delafield Arts Foundation Board, and I will answer any questions that I can.
Can you repeat your address, Pat?
Eighteen thirty-two West Shore Drive.
Thank you.
No questions. I'm excited about the lineup.
Well, I'm here to, for a discussion of possible action about the waiver of the event permit fees for our seven events. I think you've had a chance, I think you've had a chance to see the seven events.
Yes, it's on, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, so I don't need to read them off to you, well, I've got my phone with it just in case.
I think it's a.
As a reminder, we've, we've done this for other events, right, for Daffy?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did a waiver for all of theirs for last year. There has been a longstanding relationship with Daffy to kind of assist in some of the programs that they're offering, and I don't want to overspeak, but I believe that goes back to the agreement when they first became Daffy, or DaF.
Yeah, we've stopped saying Daffy, it sounds a little.
Goofy.
Warner Brothers, yeah.
The Arts Foundation.
Yeah, the Arts Foundation.
So far, the city's support of this music series, entertainment series, has been paying for the, for the temporary stage, the porta potties, electricity, and we've waived the park rental fee, Park and Rec waived the park rental fee for those events. So there's quite a, been quite a bit of support so far.
And the council has a history of supporting organizations that directly support the city, not just a not-for-profit, not just for another goodwill organization, but for organizations that have a direct impact on the quality of life of the City of Delafield. I'll make a motion to approve the Arts Foundation waive their event permit fees for the Twenty Twenty-three Event Series.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, just, what is, what is the fees per, per event that we could be sharing?
Fifty bucks, a total of three hundred and fifty, if I've got it right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
On behalf of the Delafield Arts Foundation Board, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Okay, now on to D, Approval of Vouchers list.
I'll move to approve the vouchers.
I'll second.
Danielle? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, City Administrator, anything for you?
I was just gonna mention the.
Okay, now on to the approval of the vouchers list.
I'm moved to approve the vouchers.
Danielle? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, City Administrator, anything for you?
I was just going to mention the two open houses at the fire department for the referendum that Matt already mentioned, but I will be at those open houses along with Chief Fennig and looking forward to fielding questions that our residents have.
Sounds good.
Tom, do you have any updates on the street weight ordinance? The signs and that kind of stuff with construction coming up soon?
Yeah, we need to get our permit request into the state and the county to locate signs in their right-of-way. So it's on the books, it can be enforced right now, but I think right now our police department will still be, just could be given warnings until we get proper signage up. Because some of the signage, like, you know, we're anticipating putting signage on the I-94 off-ramp so that trucks know that they can't turn left, that they've got to, they've got to head outside of the city.
Makes sense.
And same thing with the county right-of-way on the, on the north end of downtown.
See, that's the more complicated one. Okay, City Clerk.
The referendum mailer.
Show it up for the cameras so they know how to find it, what it looks like.
Went out.
Please read it.
My goodness, I think it went out in the mail the 10th or 11th, so two Friday, two Fridays ago, which was a few days before we did the absentee mailing. We did the mailing on the 14th. So my understanding is the majority of folks did receive this before they received their ballots, so they had that information in their hands before they were voting. We did send out our first group of absentee ballots on March 14th and there was about 400 ballots that got sent out. The in-person absentee starts tomorrow, March 21st, and then of course, the election is April 4th, so please make sure that you come out and vote for that.
Good job on the mailer.
Yeah.
All right, we were worried whether or not we'd be receiving. Alerting people properly that they should read it.
Is there anybody here?
I got a smile on my face when I got my mail. Molly did a really good job. Good job.
I think we got our point across. We don't know how to do it, but we wanted to not be able to miss it. And I, I think that absolutely fit the bill. Even, but for some, I don't know. I guess they still had some trouble.
And within budget, so.
Yes.
There you go.
Just as an important thing too. Well, thank you very much, Molly. Okay, City Treasurer, I'll refer you to the packet, last item, D, Request for Future Agenda Items. If you have any now, speak up, otherwise reach out to the administrator.
Can we put on the agenda to, just that, just to discuss the referendum, just to have it on the agenda? So if there's, if people come with questions, that we can always talk about it? Just if people come with questions and we have things to answer, we can always talk about it.
The next meeting is after the election.
It'll be after the election.
Oh, is it after already? I'm sorry. I thought we had one more. Never mind.
We'll be talking about it.
I'm sorry, I thought we had one more.
Discuss the referendum results.
Never mind.
We'll talk the agenda tonight, so if there's anything you would have liked to have said about.
Never mind, I thought we had one more, so never mind, switch that.
Sounds good. Sounds like we don't have any other ones, so if you come up with something between now and the next meeting, reach out to Tom. All right, 13 correspondents referred to you in the packet and last but not least, 14, we are now adjourned seeing no further business at 7:52. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.